Can I ask you to turn your turnips on?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I don't think I've turned them on.
It's a change we're not heard over the crowd.
Yes.
It's the dawn over there. Okay, this meeting is property, hosted at all those hosting places. Okay, and approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor of them, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say aye. Motion's carried, we've got the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes. The school board meeting minutes of Tuesday, May 26th, that's 7:30 AM.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is second, are there any additions, corrections? All in favor of them, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say aye, sign, motion's carried. Financial report and bill listing.
Move to approve the financial report and bill listing as follows. Direct deposit numbers, 9000 through 38569 through 9000 through 38678 for the amount of $142,255.32. Checks number 553596 through 553601, amount of $632.89. Direct deposit numbers, 9000 through 389789, $160,666.81. Wire transfers numbered, 20100448 through 20140484, Checks numbered, 50504 through 50598, $234,840.28. Credit card transactions for May of 2015, $26,878.88. ACH direct deposit numbers, 141500167 through 14150194, amount of $4,686.88.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? All in favor of them, say aye.
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 Polls say aye, sign, motion's carried. You should've saved your most voice for the rest of the meeting.
It's been like this for a couple days, so.
How do you say it?
You gotta move it out of there. Here, maybe there's a spot right over here. The porch is built, we'll set you ready second back.
Okay, so we're on delegation to be heard, and no one has checked to speak. So we're gonna move on to administrative. Sure, redonation.
We have approximately $2,100 worth of donations. Would like to thank all of our donors. We have Merton families for the rain garden. That was Amanda DiBianno, who orchestrated and put some grasses up. And then also you saw some additions to the burn over there too as well. NIMAC gave also two initial donations to the principals' opportunities, their principal funds. And NIMAC is basically an insurer who only ensures educators. And they came in and did a little presentation for our staff about grant opportunities as well. And I know they've already written, we've got a couple grants through some principal foundations, tower gardens, and then some other things for STEM and things like that too as well. So we thank them for that. Merton Band with just some musical, music equipment, some donation dollars.
Yeah, parents' fund raise.
Correct, it's them closing their own account and then putting that money with the district only for musical equipment. And that's just kind of how it was handled, putting the donation fund to gear market for Merton Band.
And then a few other things there too as well. And then the Colvers, our last Colvers night was more than $20, which I believe was a record for them too as well. Looking for a motion to approve the donations as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the donations as presented, and the total amount of $2,172.52.
I'll second. Okay, the motion is second. All in favor of them?
Aye.
Polls say aye, sign, motion's carried. Personnel actions.
Would like to present free hires, actually. We have Mr. David Wagner, who, the search team consisting of Sarah Kaskowitz, Mary Alonski, myself, Carrie Mimcek, and Jay. We are recommending David Wagner to replace John Reining. So David comes to us with about 11 years of experience from the Okonok School District, from the forest, and also some time out in California too as well. So a great middle school science teacher, that's where he's been and that's where his passion is. So we would, we are very excited to recommend David to the board for approval as well. And then also, this past week, after the publication of the board publication, we have two new first grade hires which we'd like to present to the board. One is Amanda Benty, and the other one is Carolyn Strong. Carolyn comes to us with about eight years from the Kettle Morang School District, Duffman Elementary School, where she served in multiple roles there. Third, fourth, second grade teacher there. And then Amanda Benty is coming to us from the Sussex Hamilton School District too. So Amanda is a Merton grad, Haride grad, and so we have those two contracts in front of you as well. So, and with that though, the reason why we have a second one is we'd like to thank Jill Rumel. Jill Rumel has decided not to return with us as that. But I'd like to thank her, and then another person who has resigned her position or not returned her contract is Dana Urrado. So Dana has decided to pursue, just like Jill, some other opportunities with whatever they might want to pursue with that. So we thank them and wish them the best of luck as well. Jay and I are, along with John, we'll be interviewing next week for that choir general music and band position too as well. So just looking for a motion to approve David Wagner, Amanda Benty, and Carolyn Strong, their individual teacher contracts as presented.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the teaching contracts for David Wagner, Amanda Benty, and Carolyn Strong as presented.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any further questions? All in favor of them, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say aye, sign, motion's carried. We're on to information, you will say that?
Nope, nothing right now, it was a great end of the school year. Nothing that you guys, nothing to fill the time here.
Okay, we have any committee reports?
Not this month. Next month we'll pick up the finance committee and then also hold a policy committee meeting too as well.
Okay, reports are updated.
Giving our principals the night off.
Good, we're on a little bit. Employee handbook, the changes to that, the second reading?
Second reading, now the last reading we brought in some very basic language changes and things like that. And then what you also see attached in your board packet is the, would be the legal terms of the post-employment benefits for our staff given the retirement benefit cliff. That is going to be occurring in the next couple of years. So that language is all right there, and it just would be inserted in section 10, post-employment benefits, in section number two. So other than that, just looking for board approval for the 15, 16 employee handbook, which does kick in July 1st, which is really there until August.
That's New Year's Day?
Uh, New Year's, that's New Year's Day. Tomorrow, New Year's Eve day. If more than two of you show up at one time, I need to escort one of you out. We cannot post a New Year's Eve party. So we are celebrating the fiscal years again. There's somebody doing it, it's celebrating. You guys don't seem as excited about it as we are.
We're September 1st, we're that far.
That's for New Year's.
We need a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll move to approve the new employee, 2015, 2016 employee handbook.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is second, any further questions?
Question is on the dates on post-employment benefits. I'm sure it's correct, but I just want to make for sure that. And up above it says eligibility is as of September 1, 2016. But below, the contribution will be issued on September 6, 2015.
Yep, we need to move that to 2016.
Wait, hold on. The payout, we, the payout can be as late as September 6th. And that's all that's said, that's just giving us leeway to make that payout simply as late as September 6th. But.
September 1st.
September 6th of 2016.
2016, no, 2016.
Part B.
All questioning the year.
Yeah.
Your rate, yes.
2015.
Yep. 2016. Okay.
So would that correct?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
It'll be 2016.
All right, so your motion and your second, but would that correct? Okay, then all in favor of them, say aye, thank you, ready?
Aye.
Polls say aye, sign, motion's carried. And we are on to the new business of district property insurance.
Mike, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Yep, so we went out to bid for property insurance when we found out that LGPIF would no longer be funded through our state budget. And as we kind of thought early on in the process, our LGPIF bid came back very high. Our insurance rep from F3 uses us as an example for how high the bids can go. So a 283% increase was a little high. So we went out to bid, we got three other bids, EMC, Chubbs, and Liberty Mutual. And EMC came in the lowest, surprisingly, really from the range that we'd like to see. There's still an increase, but the majority of that increase was due to our property being revalued last year. So we had, in previous years, we had a property valuation of nearly $28 million. And LGPIF really hadn't done a rebound in many years. And so that rebound came in last year through C-Biz and valued our property at nearly $48 million or $44 million on buildings and maybe another six or nine, somewhere in that range for our other properties within and outdoor properties as well. So anyway, with those bids coming in, EMC came in the lowest of all four bids. I mean, a couple initially by about $4,000 or $5,000 below Liberty, as you can see on there. The only piece that was, I discussed with F3 was the flood insurance. The flood insurance in this new property insurance is only at $150,000. I say only because LGPIF had insured us up to $1.5 million. Now, the board can decide if you want to increase that, the increments would be $1 million or $2 million. So $150,000 kind of baked in to the property insurance quote. You can jump to $1 million for what we believe will be an additional $2,600 a year or $2 million for, I believe it was $4,400, $4,800, it's all in the estimate right now. Just to put in some context, I know I was talking to John about if we ever had really any claims due to flooding, and the only thing you could think about was the gym floor. When that had gotten, it was after a rain, and after a rain, the floor had warped. And that ended up costing us, I believe it was like a $130,000 claim. So just having the floor warp from rain was a $130,000 proposition for us that our insurance covers. So that's already getting real close to that 150 threshold that I would recommend just increasing that to $1 million, just to kind of be safe. I mean, if we didn't have that and something did happen, I would feel horrendous. So having the $1 million, there is the $2 million option, but that might be, you know, beyond really what our exposure is to flood possibilities. So really, I'm looking for a recommendation to, I'm looking for two recommendations. One would be to withdraw from LGPIF. I would have to do one motion, once that motion is made, writing kind of signs in this form that I faxed to LGPIF tomorrow, say we're dropping coverage of you. And then a second motion to take on EMC. And one more note, EMC is currently our work with comp, claims people that we sent through and our work with comp, they've been great to work with. Haven't heard anything but great things about EMC and their closely connected with F3, which I like as well. And they've been game in most, so their district's all over the place that have EMC for their district property. So that'd be the second motion to take on EMC. And I would just need maybe just a recommendation to say, yes, let's go with the $1 million of flood insurance versus the $150,000. Sorry, one more note, you'll also notice that on the bottom line of the property, we actually get more insurance coverage with EMC than the other three companies, Chubbs and Liberty. And we even, LGPIF coming out of $50 million. They go on the lower side, especially of, I don't know what it is. They go on the low side of, not the property value itself, but the business personal property. EMC kicks that up to about $8.8 million versus $5.4 million that the other three companies, it actually come out $3 million ahead in overall coverage and a lower quote, so yay for EMC.
Let's do the motion for the LGPIF, and then get the other motion on the floor, and then we can discuss the other alternatives.
I'll make a motion to withdraw coverage from the local government property insurance fund effective July 1, 2015.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of them, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say aye, sign, motion's carried. And the second motion?
Make a motion to approve EMC insurance as Merton Community School District's property insurance provider with the premium not to exceed $30,000 effective July 1, 2015.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. What is our deductible, like on the flood?
I believe it's right here at $5,000. I think that covers most of the top pieces here for property coverage with flood. So it's $5,000.
So we have $5,000 exposure, no matter which limits.
Well, Liberty, Liberty has a $2,500 exposure, so half. And it looks like they have, uh, let's see. They have a water damage and sewer backup, oh, there's the flood, and they have $1 million of flood as well. Oh, but flooded, oh, I'm sorry. So the flood deductible, very bottom line, the flood deductible for EMC is $25,000. Twenty-five thousand dollars.
And also that's for Liberty.
And same is, same for Liberty.
Chubbs does not offer flood insurance?
Chubbs has been part of a, I believe this, let's see, included. I thought there was a basket somewhere for their insurance.
What else, Joe, do you think could be damaged if we had a lot of water?
Do you get into drywall, insulation, ceiling tiles, carpet replacements? Anytime you start to get into those types of exposures?
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand this building, what we have.
Do we have any real risk areas?
Risk areas?
The only risk area in this building, obviously we have the wood floor because that's very close to water levels. But over here, if you got into fifth grade area, that's a little bit lower. You'd have some carpet there, carpet and a little bit of drywall, depending on how much water entered the building. But we've only got about five rooms with the exposure to it, or six actually, that would encompass the shell of the building over here in the seventh floor.
When it flooded previously and got to the gym floor, what, was there anything extraordinary? Anything was the range is absolutely like hundred-year flood type.
Yeah, it was one of those where we got that seven inches of rain within.
And we've changed those, it came underneath the doors on the north side. And we've changed those doors since.
Changed those doors since.
I'm just wondering if we're overkill on this lot, by going to $1 million?
Is there any exposure out the shed for flood damage?
There's gonna be a backup, and there's exposure. And the sewer backup is separate from flood damage.
Right, and any water coming in through the roof, that wouldn't be flood damage, would it?
I wouldn't say that's flood damage, no. I mean, I don't know if you're sure of that, but I think water, I don't think that'd be.
Kevin, clean water.
Right.
You know, way back when we had our late Merton.
Right.
We had, that was our water issue, but I think we've gotten that pretty well solved. Are we gonna have, I just wonder if it's worth it.
What's the difference in price, Mike?
About $2,600 a year to go to $1 million.
Anything above that?
And it's actually $175,000 exposure, because you gotta add the deductible in there.
You pay the deductible.
So if you $175,000 was the damage, I was wondering how we could write that up?
Outside of the floor?
When you start bringing in restoration companies for remediation and all that stuff on.
Yeah, with the idea of mold and things.
Yep.
Yeah, the only, like, primary school, it would be more so in the east wing is where we possibly have some flood damage there.
Do you rack up any substantial dollars in furniture and books and all the other stuff that would get damaged if water was coming?
No, because we've got all steel and plastic, a couple inches. Yeah, you wouldn't, nothing substantial.
It'd get rid of our flood plane.
It would, it would be, yeah.
I just. It's insurance. So it's insurance. Whatever you guys want to, yeah, it's insurance, it doesn't make you feel better if we would have a flood kind of situation. Like, we were close to it about two years ago, when we almost had, I mean, we didn't have any issues in the intermediate school, nor did we have issues before, but we had water up to the sidewalk around the primary school.
Yeah, and that water was getting high.
Yeah, it was coming. And that was one of those seven inches of rain in three hours scenarios. But we didn't have any water damage.
Because we had one survey this summer where the retention pond filled with water. Once that retention pond fills with water, everything else is backed up. So are we still okay back there?
Do you know offhand, like, what our flood plain is for our property?
Right, a hundred-year.
Yeah, I would assume we're at least 100, I mean, I'm across the street.
What's that range over there?
But, you know, they designate 25-year flood plain, 100-year flood plain. Basically, you can expect to flood each year.
That's necessarily true.
No, it's an indication that they just, although I guess we have people here with enough history that, you know, we're, you know, we know we're at least on to the 20-year flood plane or anything.
We have $50 million worth of property. And would a flood possibly damage 1 million of it?
Could.
Anything's possible.
It's insurance.
I was actually curious about that number. How did we go from $28 million to $44 million in buildings?
Because LGPIF had kept valuations low for a long time, they had to keep rates down. And it was kind of irresponsible, because if we would lose both buildings, we wanted to recover and total valuation.
But what, under what scenario would we lose both buildings?
Turn to money.
Turn to a good take, quick.
And if you don't, I mean, if you want to go down that route, you don't have to. EMC, we would go with EMC, the current valuation, they would go with LGPIF's valuation of $28 million. And they would send somebody out to then revalue this year. And you could slowly kick it up over two years. So for example, if they come and revalue, EMC sends their people out, it's 50 million, just like we did, you could slowly kick up that valuation over the next couple of years. I certainly told EMC, it's worth 50 million, let's ensure 50 million right off the bat. But we certainly could step it up to keep rates lower for a couple of years, but it's eventually, they're gonna eventually want to kick us up to 50 million regardless. But you could step it.
Even at $200 a square foot, which would be a very high number, we don't get to 50 million. That's 40 million, if you got 200,000 square feet.
Or 40, it's 44 million is what they valued it at, 44, and then 8, 8.8 in property.
And I would, I would think we would be able to replace this type of facility for 150 is worth of it?
Well, I mean, we can't set our valuations, whatever the economic tells it.
I mean, that would be the greatest, that's where you could gain the greatest reduction.
Correct, because the property has this correction.
So they would value it at what?
I mean, LGPIF had a third party come out last year, C-Biz. And that's what they valued it at, at about 44. And building value, correct?
So they.
I forgot what the square footage was.
With all these square foot we've got, we've got boilers, we've got.
Well, we're probably, I mean, do we have 8.8 in personal property? I don't know about that, that's just.
Yeah, that was something for that area.
That's just an EMC number that they put in. They put it in at 20% or whatever it is of the property valuation. So 44 million to replace these two buildings? To see C-Biz's number from last, last, last fall. But EMC would probably sell their own people again.
And we can always see what they say, and then, obviously that's the number one producer in property.
Well, right, we could, we could, we last, or we could say go with the LGPIF numbers and maybe you send those people out and we'll step it up over time. Again, they're not gonna let us step it up forever, can't do 10 years now. But, you know, they might say, well, go 50%, 50% over just two years. You could do that. Because you're right, the likelihood of attorney blacking out is too, probably August will happen.
And could your fire returning?
That's the most likely. But that, you know, that's like with any insurance, though.
Life insurance, I mean, you know, anything.
But fireworks, you'd be one of them.
And likely only be one of them, exactly. So if they're not valuing the buildings separately and you had a valuation of 30 million and one of them were destroyed, 30 million would be fine to cover and replace.
Astro fit?
Big aspirer.
I think we got bigger issues. So what do you guys think?
So we have a motion on the table for EMC with a million dollar.
Well.
The motion. That takes 30,000.
That's 2,600.
And an additional, and I just played it out a little bit, just in case it came in above 2,600 to $1 million.
So we're not, we're not locked into anything we can direct him.
Correct. Right, if we're on a slower step scale, it's certainly still coming up to 30, if he wants.
The other question I had was the business income, and, which I don't think our business income's at risk.
What that is, is what would come off. But the extra expenses, if this building is wiped out, what would the cost to bring in my trainers? Yeah, yeah, all that stuff. So it was by LGPIF, I think, I was told through that that was overkill. And really, they've never seen a claim over $1 million to have mobile homes brought in to teach students, so. So they thought a million dollars was was fine.
I saw that BI actually, I'm sorry, Liberty actually had the the one hundred thousand coverage for business income. I'm guessing their rate would go down if they didn't offer that.
Well, the thing is, with business income, we're not a profit. I mean, we're still gonna break in our tax revenue.
Right, so as I said, our income is not at risk.
Right, it's not even a risk.
On the legislature's.
What, so how do we wanna direct him? I would probably lean towards lowering the profit.
I would as well.
I'm pretty agreeable on that. And I understand the flood insurance, that's twenty-six hundred dollars, so.
And and the twenty-six hundred dollars, we have right now insurance for equipment breakdown. That's a separate entity with LGPIF. That's about twenty-six hundred dollars. EMC includes equipment breakdown in their quote. So I would be crossing out equipment breakdown in budget for twenty-six hundred. And simply replacing it with additional flood insurance if that makes you feel any better about spending the additional, give me a wash to to the to the budget, budgetary wash. Because equipment breakdowns include the EMC.
What kind of equipment do they cover?
Um, I think it's a lot of its, like HVAC systems. No, I I don't know if it's within the building, but but a lot of outside stuff, talking. Tractor, yeah, yeah, well, not not each, but classroom equipment, things like that, the tractors that are outside, anything that's not structural. I don't know if we should attach a few structure or not. I know.
There's a lot of money.
Birdhouses.
That's something I would fix it, too. I just wonder if they would quote you a price for half a million with flood insurance.
I was told the steps are a hundred and fifty, one million, two million. I can certainly ask.
It'll give you half a million, but it'll cost the same as a million.
Yeah, I don't know.
Actually higher because we don't have that stuff.
If there's nothing else that you're wondering more about, okay?
Really, I I know I know that's where I could certainly go to people to find out if you need that.
Yeah, well, I mean, if there, if if it's included or has a dollar value attached to it, maybe it also has a premium attached to it. And if it doesn't make sense, you know, why would we wanna spend our money there?
You can cut us out some pieces.
Right. Accounts receivable.
Yeah.
Why would you have coverage for accounts receivable?
Uh, I believe we're talking about, um... I I think this is, I don't wanna say it's a fact, because that's a separate piece. But I'm trying to recall, we said, if, let me think of an example. You can move on to your next question. Let me think to an example or go ahead with your next question.
And and then the other one would be like the arson reward.
You want you want a new twenty-five thousand dollar reward if someone has information?
Does is the insur, does the insurance cover the building regardless of whether we offer it or not?
Yes.
Of course. So what do we care if the person doesn't have?
Probably lower the premium maybe. I mean, lower it, is it there?
If it's in there.
It might.
If it does, then keep it.
That's what, half the world stood this district at one time.
Somebody tried to burn down a building?
No, they they did burn down a building at Burn School. But there were, obviously, there was bill reward at that time. Lake High Schoolhouse was burned in the morning with a winter.
Really, I'm thinking that two hundred thousand, four thousand was receivable. And maybe it's high, it's cash, coin, checks that are in the business office at the time of, let's, you know, I don't know, let's say, let's say in January. You know, we've got, you know, I've got my tax, tax recovery, you know, tax receipts, my tax checks in the in the business office locked up, ready to go. And we come through and wipe things out. I I don't know, but that might be your example.
Yours?
Not that, but I suppose I would be writing a check.
Yeah, I am new. I don't know anything about this. I just Googled it.
Oh, here we go.
Whether it's accurate or not, but it is from RMI and there's an owl on it, so it's gotta be smart. Insures against loss of sums owed to the insurer by its customers that are uncollectible because of the damage by the insured peril peril to accounts receivable records. So are you unable to...
Collect debts.
Collect debts because of what occurred.
Right, and that's one, again, that I don't see that as a scrap.
Because who always has money?
Where's, I mean, where's our money come from? It's tax dollars.
Well, let's say an open enrollment school goes bankrupt, but it's open enrollment kids here.
That's through the state of Wisconsin. The state of Wisconsin, outside of students with special needs facilities, open enrollment dollars.
It would have to be, we can't collect the dollars because of the damage that happened to the property. Not they can't give it to you.
And I know we're discussing these pieces, but these literally have to be like dollars that we're talking about on the entire... It may be. I gotta imagine the arson report is maybe in sense. But I can certainly look into those two if we can, I mean, you can cancel whatever you can cancel. But I I would prefer, I guess I'd talk about it in F three, see if that's possible. Do we have, though, an idea for for floor?
Is there any, John, is there anything outside, like, we just redid the, you know, the sewer for the, you know, the the pipe, you know, up front here? And, you know, historically, there've been problems in the back, you know, flooding. Is there anything that, you know, we'd have to, you know, we'd have problems that would damage anything? They would have to, you know, redo grading or any sort of exterior stuff that would add up to something substantial?
Sidewalks, asphalt.
But you still have that twenty-five thousand dollar deductible.
Yeah.
That's... You can do a lot of that kind of stuff for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You gotta rip it out.
Rip out...
Asphalt. Because I don't know wood, water, I mean, I mean, I think water is...
You think the hundred might be?
Yeah. It's too bad there isn't some intermediary step to that. Go ahead. Well? John, what do you think? Hundred fifty will replace the gym floor?
Yeah. In in my honest thing, I would, I would go with the one million dollars, just from what I've heard other schools talk about. And problems that they had and it just doesn't take one bad of them.
Do you have any something else?
Hmm?
Do we got any something else?
Uh, just one little something for air conditioning.
Like basement area or...
Yeah, it's intercooled space.
But none other than for that air conditioning, so we don't have any air conditioning. The wide level, what are you... I'm okay with a million coverage. I'm assuming you're gonna say more than twenty-five hundred dollars shouldn't change that.
Yes, I just, as you...
I agree.
Change value. So the initial, EMC initially gave it eighteen thousand, valued again at twenty-eight million. So we'd probably be around there until the step up occurs.
Which that would almost gets back to where we were, even with the additional twenty-five hundred.
Correct.
Yeah, I would probably go with the million per floor.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second. Hold the paper then.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we've got fifteen... Fifteen, sixteen, teacher contracts. All contracts came in?
Um, no, not all the contracts came in. And one contract, I had a conversation with Ammoni Piondo today, and Ammoni has decided not to return her contract for personal reasons. So I'll continue to have the conversation with Ammoni, but at this time, she has not returned her contract, has not expressed a desire to return to the district for us. So so unfortunately, again, that news came across this afternoon. So but all the other individuals who are presented in there have returned their contracts. And and ultimately, this is a step in, just an exercise, because those contracts were not non-renewed, which ultimately we need to renew them. So looking for a motion to approve the twenty-fifteen, sixteen individual teacher contracts as presented, but we will strike out Ammoni Piondo.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-fifteen, sixteen individual teacher contracts as presented.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Are there any questions? So, okay, um... Are you gonna post, replace, or...
Yep, we will be, we'll be posting.
We have no obligation to hold that position.
No, we, no ob, well, she has asked for a leave of absence. So we'll be talking about it with the administrative team, but and I'll be informing the board about what our decision, my decision is. So she asked for a one-year leave of absence.
Does that, she's going to teach now?
No, no, this is this is pure personal reasons. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
If, in our handbook, it does not, it's mute on leave of absences. We will be, I will be reviewing what's in the best interest of the organization and the students. Who will be certain here, obviously, there's a lot of negatives. The positives is, is it saves a spot for a teacher who wants to come back, possibly wants to come back. We know that approximately fifty percent of leave of absences for personal reasons turn into permanent absences and don't return. The negatives to a leave of absence is, is obviously, you're, you would be going out and searching for a one-year contract only, which limits your recruiting pool to people who, because most people will not leave a continuing contract for a one-year, not continuing contract. And it's bad advice to anybody. So it it does put the district a little bit at that for recruitment and a retainment tool for a high-quality educator. So I will be getting back to Ammoni about about that request going forward, so.
Yeah, for what it's worth, my daughter was a request last week. I thought she did great.
I signed her as as well.
Yeah.
So she's an excellent educator.
Sad that she needs some time off.
Yep.
Yep.
Sad for us.
Yep, sad for us.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion second.
Yes.
Then all favor, then I'll say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried.
Um, we do have, there was a, it it got posted, but it didn't make the the warrant packet. The primary rooftop units as well, I know it's in the agenda, it also was posted accordingly. It is, is as part of the, you do have, and I know I informed all of you that we were gonna be be looking at that. Attached is the, we did go out and and ask for bids to replace the remaining seven rooftop units on the primary school. The, I should say, the original nineteen ninety-six. The last two years, we have been replacing them. We've replaced fourteen over the past two years. And this would basically sweep out any old RTUs, which are the rooftop units that operate heating and cooling systems as part of our our energy thing. So we we reached out to previous bidders, which would be Hillingworth and as well as Home Mechanical. And as well as, and you'll see, we have two new people that have that we've reached out to. One is Sprung, right down the corner, down the road here. And the other one is another company in southeast Wisconsin, JM Brenner, who we do have a relationship with, who does do some work for us. And then Service Specialist, obviously, also put a big pro, big package together. And you can see that out of the free bids, Service Specialist did come in at below us at seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. And then the other two were were a little bit more, one was a lot more, and the other one was a little bit more than that two. So it is part of our facility improvement plan to replace all of those before they break and kind of stay on top of it. Obviously, what Batty is doing is we'll also obviously tie in directly to that. But replacing them with more efficient, we'll be continuing to work with focus on energy to get those rebates back to as well. So that seventy-eight thousand will be lowered based on what qualifies for energy exemptions too as well. So it is the administrative's recommendation to move forward Service Specialist to replace the seven remaining RTUs, not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
This is already in the budget. How much is the budget? Eighteen.
But technically, we can't do this because of the gym.
No, it was posted already. It's just not in your warrant packet.
It was listed as a possible action, right?
On, on the posting.
In the posting, right.
So our agenda's a little...
Our agenda, correct, they were printed early.
Okay.
The package was written.
Yep. Okay, so it was posted.
Yep.
Okay. And that's... Okay, with me, we should have, when we did the agenda that we had in front of us, amended that. The agenda to reflect that was changed, posted. But since it was posted, I don't have a problem with it. Future reference, we probably should amend.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't double check that.
So, what's the board's opinion?
I'll make a motion to approve Service Specialist to replace the remaining seven rooftop units on the primary school, not to exceed the amount of seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion second. So that's, that's not one of the items that you're, that this is for the new budget.
Correct.
So that's not one of those.
And and the reason why, it is in the budget instead of waiting for the fall.
Right.
Just to, when we don't have kids and, yeah, we're done. So and as part of the bid, bid spec is, is they have the work done prior to August twentieth, I think it was.
Yeah.
Somewhere around there.
My hope is a month of July, the school's getting there.
Before summer school convention's over.
Have you worked with these guys before, John, or have you known all of them?
Service Specialist?
Yeah, they've done it.
Two of them.
Two of them, they've done. They've been wonderful.
Yep.
Do they, I mean, they consistently beat everybody. Are they cutting corners anywhere? They're putting on new gas regulators and...
We watch them real close and so do the inspectors, and if they do try to cut any corners, they're not getting away with with anything.
Actually, Brennan doesn't have much to...
No, they're not.
They're close.
So most of them...
And Brennan's a much larger organization, right, they have more overheads.
He asked me to yield a bid. That's why, yeah, that's why I had to...
It'd be nice to see them, right? It'd be nice to see if they got the business, but we can't pay them sixteen thousand, about a point. How old are the these units, thirty or less?
Maybe six.
So these seven is better up there, still ninety-six.
Those are still ninety-six units, yeah. So we'll have three units left up there. They'll be dated two thousand and two. Those will be all the business companies.
That's ninety-six.
Yeah, one's over the business office, and the other two are over the new addition.
Okay, any other questions? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll the same time. Motion approved. Do they need a product?
Sure. Um, just an update, we'd like to, uh, and this will be, I'd like to put this on the board for, for an action item for next, uh, for, for the July board meeting, so we can, uh, secure the vendors and secure the contractors as well. And, um, as, as we've been speaking about for, for quite some time, the total project itself is about a hundred and four thousand dollars. So far, um, we've got thirty-five, and the month, the early month of July is the big. What we're gonna do is be going out and soliciting corporate sponsorships. And, uh, the one thing I'd like to, uh, kind of have a conversation about right now is the types of businesses to go out and solicit and, and ask. And we did talk a little bit about this when we put our, uh, our, our policy together, when we talked about accepting donations and, and it was the endorsement of what would be maybe alcohol or AB or anything else like that. I guess we've got an awful lot of people we're able to reach out to who are not in, say, the food business. Kind of bring up with the, this is an Applebee's conversation, On the Rocks, Ender's, some local businesses that do serve, serve alcohol. But they, they're, they're in the community and they're obviously part of the business structure. Is, is those types of businesses something that you would like me to pursue, uh, possible sponsorships with? On the Rocks, it's a bar and grill, Applebee's, Ender's, those types of restaurants, all the way from, and, and throwing in any Mo's, for instance, who, you know, they, they just happen to serve alcohol there at some of those establishments.
I'll ask you a question. Uh, I see some of the advertisers around Arrowhead, but Arrowhead doesn't have anything that, do they have anything that goes with establishment that have alcohol?
I have, I have not seen a sta-- I have not seen like Ender's, for instance, um, or Applebee's, or any type of banner, supporting, you know, so-and-so is a proud supporter of athletics if they're serving alcohol. I haven't seen that.
I don't think I'd want it. If Arrowhead's not gonna do it, I don't think I would recommend us doing it.
Yeah, regardless of what Arrowhead does, I mean, that's a little bit of a different, uh, clientele or whatever for the advertising, but I would agree that we should not have people that, or have advertisements from organizations that serve alcohol.
I don't know. I, I think some of the restaurants, you know, you think Applebee's, you don't think about booze right away. At least, you know, families go there and eat, and the kids eat there, and I don't see anything out of the Applebee's or Ender's. Um, On the Rocks, the name just sounds like it's an alcoholic, alcohol establishment, so I don't think that would be appropriate. But the other ones I don't have an issue with.
Okay.
There's a really hard, there's a very fuzzy line between what's a restaurant with a bar, and what's a bar that serves food, and what's just a restaurant.
How do we justify, we don't like taking that name, when their business may not be, their business model may not be any different than the others.
I would recommend that the board give a direction that is consistent, so you, it's, it's very clear which, which, which direction we would, and I bring it up because we have been approached by some, some organizations. And we said, hey, hold on for a second, we will, and then we bring this up before we get too far down the road. Because we had the beginning parts of the conversation, we put the policy in place. Um, it didn't prohibit, uh, it gave the board the opportunity to say yes or no to, to a possibility of an establishment like that.
What if, like, Fox Brothers or Sendex were willing to give us money?
Their grocery store.
Or PQ.
Or PQ.
Yeah, that, that's where you, you know, if it is it, it, that's, that's a very, very good point. Those are, those are grocery stores that you see all over the place, and that they are supporters of Arrowhead, and they, they, they support by giving to the booster clubs and, you know, you see.
They probably sell a lot more alcohol than On the Rocks does.
Right. Right, but they, they sell it, they don't serve.
Yeah, you, you go to On the Rocks or Applebee's or whatever, and you consume alcohol there, as opposed to you can purchase alcohol from this place.
I agree with this.
Well, there's another.
It's a little different, but it is still a little fine line, yeah.
I personally wouldn't be opposed to it, either by the grocery stores or, or restaurants that serve alcohol. What you could do to make for sure that it wasn't just purely bar, is maybe define the percentage of their sales from, from food, from food versus beverage, which actually affects how they're treated as well, I think, that's something. So you could say that, you know, at least seventy percent of their sales can come from food.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a good idea. I, I find, uh, Applebee's, I just think of it as a restaurant. I don't think a lot of people would mind of think the name Applebee's and think, oh, drinking made a grade.
You'd go to Alton and Tom was in Applebee's, did you?
Right.
I'm an A and A, I'm an A and B. Those were my favorite apple.
Yeah.
Oh, what do you mean?
You know, like Buffalo Wild Wings.
Yeah, exactly. No, you think of it more as restaurants.
A bar, they have wings.
But I'd say On the Rocks is more of a bar than a restaurant. You know, the pizza's really good, but, you know. It is more of a.
I know, but we, uh, we are. How are we defining, just the group of us board members, defining what their business is?
Yeah, I mean.
What, how do we just, how do we, who rely on how we define it?
And, and one thing I can do is, is maybe this is a bigger discussion that I want you guys to think about. And, and so I, I, right now, I'm just gonna pause and not pursue the places that, that, that serve. I mean, you can, I, I think grocery stores is a totally different category than someone where you can go and be served. I know that's your point. Um, I, I, but I would like to have a, a formal conversation, because we, I don't need to pursue those, but I know, like, Kathy James has been, you know, said, hey, we'd be, we'd be interested in, in doing. And obviously, the, in return, we, it, it obviously could be a banner or just the name or whatever it is. Uh, you would be able to control what exactly goes on there as well, about what that advertisement looks like. And to your point, On the Rocks, their logo kind of looks like something that we probably, that I know I wouldn't want in, in a primary school, official. No. But the, the Applebee's logo, you know, is, I don't even, can't even think about that Buffalo Wild Wings or. It puts you in a different category.
The other, uh, uh, possible point to look at or that might come up is places that sell firearms. I don't, I mean, because oftentimes they're both, you know, sporting, often, you know, places like Cabela's or, you know, those types of places will sell firearms as well. That might be another one that we should think about.
So I shouldn't pursue pot one?
I didn't say gambling.
Didn't say gambling, neither that part. So I'll.
You're the exclusive.
So I think they actually do buy the, uh, charities.
I mean, it's something to think about at least. I mean, I, I'm, I'm admittedly weird and not. I'm not really a fan of firearms personally, uh, but I, I understand they have their uses.
So, we'll, we'll have a deeper conversation, and we'll include Jenny on that too, uh, next time about, about that. Um, one of the things I did also want to bring to the board is, is the idea that we do have, said we have set aside fifty thousand dollars in this budget, uh, to complete that. Now, and we do know that, um, for an additional thirty, and now, our, our hope is to, at a minimum, raise another twenty thousand dollars, and we feel very strongly that we're gonna be able to do that, really do. That's our hope at least. So that's why we've said fifty, to kind of complete the project from the district side of things. In July, we would like the board to think about is, do we just want to do the hundred and four thousand dollar project? Or would we like to do the hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar project? Because what I would like the board to do in July is also approve, we are collecting bids for bleachers, we're collecting bids for floors and mechanicals, also really the three big ones, uh, that, uh, that we, that we need to take a look at to be able to complete the project, uh, with things. Because once we approve the project from the board level, that means it's got the financial commitment of the district, uh, we can then secure the timeframes and start people, having people work on that, uh, where they can begin that in their part, in their business too as well. So, because we would like the project to get going, uh, the floor people, the floor people can get in there right away after Labor Day. Um, that, that floor will be ready to be used, because steps in the project would be, obviously, the mechanicals would be in August. We can do an awful lot of work before the floor goes in. We would do the majority of the work, whether it's the curtain, moving the hoops, um, the bleachers come in after the floor. But, um, a lot of the heavy work too can also be done before that floor goes in. So, um, just looking for that from, from the board, if that's something that the board would like to. So think about, obviously, some sponsorships, and then ultimately, if we wanted to, um, add thirty thousand dollars to the project to make the court look like wood, if that's something that the board would like to do. And we'll talk to the finance committee about some of those options too as well, uh, that we can bring to the, to the entire board to see if people want to do that.
Um, on the, the floor. It doesn't, the wood look doesn't make the floor any better, right? All in extent.
It's a stay. That's, that's what it is. It's a stay.
So, um, then the second question is, would, uh, if that was desirable to us and desirable to the groups that are using it, you know, kind of hang out with another piece and, and say, uh, if we could get matching funds to pay for that, if we jumped up fifteen thousand to match contributors to get the.
Is MAA pledging?
Uh, MAA is gonna be doing that in the end of July. I, I went to their June meeting, and, uh, um, we'll be, they're, they're making a decision. I'm working with their MAA president as well. So, um, we'll cross our fingers, because they, they've got all sorts of creative ways, because they, they understand that they're the primary users of it, and that they want to show their appreciation from that. So they'll be finalizing that in July.
Yeah, I guess I, I kind of agree a little bit, because it's, if I'm spending another thirty thousand dollars just for the sake of spending it.
Right.
But, you know, I'm trying to picture like what it's gonna look like. It will look, I personally think, a lot better with the lighter colored, you know, wood floor as opposed to the blue, just as a giant sea of, you know, blue floor.
That's what I was thinking, um.
And it's gonna be there for a long time, so.
If we get to that point, it could be a partnership.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Both of these are life floors. They're considered life floors, the life of the building. Very low maintenance, every, every fifteen years, some really light stuff. So, okay. So just some things to think about, what have we been discussing?
Are we thinking of any other kinds of fundraisers for it?
Um, we have, well, you, right, because what we would probably like to do is, the next year's, we have, we've set a fall bash out at Ironwood again, and we also have secured, uh, another, we'll secure date for trivia night, and we may just take those funds to offset, uh, this project, depending on what we can do for some private donations too as well. Uh, we've had really good luck, hopefully, MAA, uh, will, will come through for us too as well. But, um, they've been, we've had some really good results with the, uh, the artwork, and I'm not quite sure what the total on that was.
A little over ten thousand.
A little over ten thousand.
Yeah.
Right, just for the artwork, uh, the metal artwork and things like that. So, we, we, we have approximately thirty-five, but we'll, might be making sure that we've got everything all taken care of that, and we'll bring that to the board too in July as well.
Okay, then we're here to future meetings and agenda items. Everything worth on those.
So we have an early meeting next month. Thank you for moving that up a little bit. And then we've got our thirty-first, and then we've got the annual meeting, believe it or not. I don't know, Cora, need the agenda.
The agenda items? Hey, I think we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second, in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
The same time, motion's carried.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
So contracts signed.
We have a few things to sign.
Yes, we do.
Bill, you are dismissed. You have the, the last half of the bachelor rep.
It can't be for.
I've received one of those.
Me either.